It does feel like summer today.
We're getting kind of acclimated now, I think.
Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, July 11th, 2017. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to comply of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call is all present except Danielle. Minutes, can I get a motion for approval of minutes?
I move to approve the June 13, 2017 school board meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And agenda, any changes to the agenda we have?
I think we're just adding the staff welfare.
Meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes.
I'll do those, so.
Okay, very good. So can I get a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I so moved.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Celebrations and community reports, none. And superintendent's report.
Well, real quickly, a school board calendar, as we mentioned last night, we had a staff welfare meeting that will be reported on later on. And upcoming meetings on your pink sheet, the next meeting that's not on your pink sheet, but it should be, is Tuesday, July 18th. There is going to be an operations committee meeting, Tuesday, July 18th, at 2:45. And the main purpose of that meeting is to look at the LED project that is being reviewed and then also to update and review the long-term facility maintenance plan. So that would be the two topics for that.
So LED lights as in?
Replacing all of the.
In the building?
All 5,000 fluorescent bulbs with LED lighting. Now, remember, we financed the study in terms of how many there were and where they were. And then they're coming with, the study is going to be reported to us in the operations committee. The next step is if the school board wants to move ahead with that is to have a request for proposal, go out for bids, and let different companies bid on these specifications. And the one thing that we're looking at, the reason why the long-term facility maintenance plan is on there is, you know, we had originally scheduled to replace the seating in the Performing Arts Center during the summer of 2018. But because of the lighting issue, that we may have to look at pushing that back till the summer of 2019. And so that's the major change that we'll be looking at.
That's nice with that plan, that we can do that, we have things out in front of us and, you know, you can make those changes here and there and, but it's always in our, you know, front of our faces, basically, so that's perfect.
And you'll hear more about the LED project and that, you know, the main reason we're looking at is twofold. Number one, it's better lighting, but more importantly, it's tremendous cost savings of electricity and it has a pretty easy payback within, you know, six to seven years. And more importantly, these LED lights last a long, long time. And so it should save on maintenance hours of replacing the 5,000 light bulbs that we have. It's amazing how many light bulbs we have. And then I just want to remind the board, too, that on July 25th to July 28th, I've been selected to be one of 80 superintendents for a superintendent summit in Chicago. And I saw this application a couple of months ago and I filled out the application and it's all expenses paid. They selected 80 superintendents from throughout the country, representing different parts and different regions and different sized districts. And so I'll be in Chicago July 25th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. I don't think the Cubs are playing that year, that week, so at least they're not home, but so I'll be.
I'll bet you can find them on TV.
Maybe, maybe WGN might have them, okay. So I'll report back when I learn more about that.
Yeah, hopefully you have some good stuff to bring back.
I looked at the agenda, it looks really interesting. It's much, many of the same things that we're looking at doing already, but districts are progressing and so it should be, yeah, it should be very delightful.
Okay, okay, financial business, the building refunding bonds, Patty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, superintendent. I just want to bring the good news to you about your bond sale. Today, we went out for competitive bids at 10:30 this morning, we had eight strong bids. And the winning bid was Jancy Montgomery Scott. And you're going, who are they? They've been around for about 185 years. And they came in with a bid at, interest rate at 2.53 percent. So what does that result to? Over $800,000 in savings, that's $50,000 a year that the taxpayers are going to realize. The spread between the highest and the lowest bid was 18 basis points, so there was a very small margin between the bidders. But we were very, very impressed to get 18. Let's see. The second one that came in was Wells Fargo Bank at 2.597. Piper Jeffrey, 2.599. So they were very, very close. Northland Security, 2.61. FTN Financial, 2.64. Robert W. Baird and Company, 2.65. Raymond James, 2.70. And Stefan and Nicholas, 2.71. So there was some great interest in your bonds. And again, like I shared to you at your last board meeting, is you have a very strong rating. And it was very evident when we went through, again, the rating call with Moody's. It was very apparent that you have a very strong financial position, which is needed in order to have a strong rating. Superintendent Brown and Sue Nelson did a phenomenal job on that call. And they're looking at, like I shared with you in the past, your financial of the district, how you are looking as a community, also your leadership at the board level, at the superintendent level, at the financial level, how stable your policies, procedures are. Also, they're looking at your programming, all of that they're looking at. And you guys came through very, very strong, thanks to the superintendent and business manager for that. What will happen then is if the board moves forward with this, we will let the underwriter know tomorrow that the board has accepted. And at that point, they will start selling off the bonds. The closing on this will be, the 10th of August is when the closing will be. Now, this was going to be sitting in escrow until February 1st. And that's when that'll switch over and then the savings will begin at that point. So overall, it was a very good sale for Fairmont School District.
Thank you. Seems like every time you come, you bring good news.
Well, we're continuing to watch your debt and the one thing that we are constantly doing is looking at the best opportunity for your district and when we can optimize because our goal is to try to save as much money for your taxpayers as possible.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Patty. And so we need a resolution? So someone got that or are we just?
It's on page five.
Where is it?
It's the fifth page in of this made packet here.
Oh, okay.
This one here? It's actually page four.
This was on the front page, I think. Yeah. So I'll introduce the resolution. The resolution relating to 6, is it 1,560,000 general obligation school building referending refunding bonds, Series 2017A, authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details and providing for the payment thereof. And then it just goes through and states what Patty just explained to us and so.
We need a second, we need a second.
Second.
Have we got a motion in a second? And is that a roll call or?
It is a roll call.
Okay, so Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And motion passes. Thank you again, Patty. Donations, Dan.
I have a couple of donations in appendix B and appendix C in your packet. First, I will introduce this following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Eloise Lidkey donated $100 to Fairmont High School Media Center. Be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift. You have a second?
Can we have a motion in a second? Oh, this is a roll call again. Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Is there anything that this is earmarked for or is it just a general for Media Center?
Just general.
Okay, and in appendix C, we have another donation. I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Olson Rentals donated a trailer valued at $500 to the Fairmont High School Robotics Program. Be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
They have quite a bit of equipment that they have to take with them to competitions, so it sure is helpful to have that.
Very nice.
It is a pretty nice trailer, too. And the welding class that was conducted this summer did some initial work on the trailer to reinforce the frame. There needed to be a little work done, but otherwise it is in very good shape. And it's actually parked in the high school parking lot by the vocational wing if you want to take a look at that sometime.
Great.
Okay. And next we have a grant, Dell?
Is it E?
This is here.
My apologies.
It's that second one, Roman numeral seven.
There we go. Fairmont Elementary School was awarded an $8,000 3M grant. The monies will be used to create STEM learning environments in the E2 classrooms and I would make a motion to accept that.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And moving on to financial reports, Sue?
Tonight on the agenda, we have to approve the wire transfers from June 8th to July 6th and the payment of the June 27th and July 11th bills. So if you look at your wires and transfers for June 8th to July 6th, there's quite a list. It does include all of the, everything associated with the June payroll, the net pay and all other liabilities. Second one from the bottom then is our P card payment of $9,410. And I will, we'll go through those details here in a minute. And then our total payroll dispersments for the month of June, $1,388,000. Any questions on that? Okay, then we can look at the June 27th bills. Because we didn't have a board meeting that time, Julie and I did review these prior to the checks being mailed out. Just have a couple to bring to your attention. Check number 59911 to audio, made out to audio enhancement. This is for a sound system in a reading classroom at the high school. Check number 59932 made out to Green Mill. This is for the senior banquet and the seniors use their student activity funds for that. Check number 59958 made out, made out to Skyward. This June, this past June, Skyward came for an onsite training and that was for our building ASAs, principals, nurses, and some of our teachers. Do you have any questions on that register? Okay, then we can look at the register that's for the P card. That starts with Amazon. Looking at the last, the last two, Verizon Wireless and Waste Management, those are monthly things you see on this P card register every month. The one right above that made out to the United States Postal Service, that's for envelopes for the high school, envelopes that already have postage on them. Any other, any questions on the P card register? We have about 14 people in the district that have P cards.
Okay.
Then we have two registers dated July 11th, 11th, 7/11. And that's because we've moved now into the 1718 school year. So for a few months here, we'll be paying bills for the 1617 school year and also for the 1718. So looking at the register that begins with Arnold Motors, that's the register for the 1617 school year. Just a couple to bring to your attention. Check number 59987 made out to MSBA, that was for strategic planning services that you were involved in. And then check number 59997, Tate's Tree Service, that was for tree trimming throughout the district. And then the other register starts with A+ Systems and that's for the 1718 school year. Quite a few things in this register are memberships or annual software licensing fees, things like that. The second one, Central Minnesota Educational Research, that's for our viewpoint. A couple down, Ed Leadership, that's a membership. E-Spark, that's a membership for an online learning. IXL Learning, that's for IXL learning seats throughout the district. Then we have memberships to MASAA, MASPA for the elementary principals, MREA. A couple down from there, Our Schools Today, that's our website, annual costs. Couple, or the next one, then a Skyward and those are our annual costs. So quite a few of these right away in July, we need to get those paid. Then just one other one to bring to your attention, the third one down, made out to the city of Fairmont. That's the first half of our obligation to the city of Fairmont for the SRO, our School Resource Officer. Do you have any questions on any of the registers? Julie and I did review everything prior to the board meeting.
If there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the wire transfers for June 8th, 2017 to July 6th, 2017, and payment of the June 27th and July 11th, 2017 bills.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Sue.
You're welcome.
Okay. So no old business, new business. Hey, I'm on for a little bit here. Organizational items, annually, the board needs to approve a number of organizational items. These are recurring things that, for which there's no change, so I'll just run through them. Number one, designate the fourth and, the second and fourth Tuesday of each month as regularly scheduled school board meetings to be held at 5:00 PM at City Hall. Number two, designate the following banks as depositories of school funds and authorize a superintendent and business manager to sign release agreement for pledged securities for collateral purposes and initiate and approve electronic fund transfers. And those banks are US Bank Fairmont, Bank Midwest Fairmont, and US Bank Minneapolis. Third item is set the compensation for school board members.
There's other banks.
Oh, oh, yeah, I gather a couple, oh, yeah, there's, there's a few more banks I missed. Profinium, First Farmers and Merchants Bank, Fairmont, State Bank, Sealon, Wells, Federal Bank, Fairmont, and State Bank, Fairmont. Number three, set the compensation for school board members at $1,800 and $2,400 for the school board president. Compensation for each additional meeting pertaining to school board matters is set at $25 for a partial day and $70 for a full day. Number four, designate the Fairmont Sentinel as the official newspaper for Independent School District 2752. Next is designate Matt Mahoney as Title IX Compliance Officer, Human Rights Officer for Independent School District 2752. Designate Sue Nelson as District Transportation Safety Director. Next designate Kim Niss as 504 Coordinator. And next designate Jim Davidson as Federal Programs Administrator as provided under Public Law 107-110. Next designate Joe Brown Senior as Home School Coordinator. Next designate Nancy Backer as Homeless Student Liaison. And then we have designate Sue Nelson as HIPAA Compliance Officer. Designate Tyler Garrison as Health and Safety Coordinator. Next, set the stipend for extra duty pay at $30 per event. And then finally, I believe, authorize payment of bills between board meetings for the purpose of obtaining a discount or required prepayment in order to avoid penalty charges. The district is also authorized to pay, pay board bills in the event a board meeting is not held. The superintendent and business manager are authorized to approve the processing of payments for invoices submitted under contracts approved by the board and under circumstances when it is deemed necessary and appropriate to proceed with a payment. So, big list.
Need a second.
And so we need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, additional new business. Okay, so Danielle was going to do the MDE Identified Official.
I can take that if you want.
Okay, Dell?
I would move to approve the naming of Mary Cole as the MDE Identified Official with authority to authorize user access to the MED secure website.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And meal prices, Nicole?
Every year, we have to, I believe it's every year, we have to look at our school lunch prices and the school district does not determine the prices of meals. There's a formula set by the government and it is called the Paid Lunch Equity calculation and that's what determines our meal prices. The calculation involves entering the number of paid meals served in October 2016 and the current cost of those meals and then it determines the weighted average prices and calculates the required increase, et cetera, et cetera. And after plugging in all those numbers, it is determined by the government formula that we need to implement a 10 cent increase for our paid student meals for the 201718 school year. For example, at the Fairmont Elementary School, lunch will be $2.80. At the junior, senior high school, lunch will be $2.90, adults $3.60, and breakfast for adults is $1.75. We'll still continue to offer free breakfast to all students. And just a reminder that there is no reduced lunch price anymore, it's all free. There's, there's no free and reduced lunch, it's free lunch. So those are the prices that have been set according to the government formula that we have to use. And with that, I move to approve the 10 cent increase in students lunches at both Fairmont Elementary and the high school.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Spec agreements, Julie?
Yeah. We currently have two agreements in place with the Southern Plains Cooperative, Southern Plains Education Cooperative, otherwise known as SPEC, through which we provide the co-op with payroll and IT services. We're recommending that these contracts be renewed for the 2017, 2018 school year. There's no changes to the enclosed agreement with regard to services and time and no cost increase, so. And those are in part in your packet in appendix E and appendix F. So I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the following agreements with Southern Plains Educational Cooperative for the 201718 school year. And like I said, that's the payroll benefit management is seen in appendix E and the technology services in appendix F.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Strategic Plan, was that designated for someone or? I'll do it.
You can do it.
Okay, so we need to approve the strategic plan. Last spring, we spent several hours over multiple meetings with community members, parents, board, trying to come up with a strategic plan for the district with the, with the help of facilitators from the Minnesota School Board Association. And they were able to pull together all our thoughts into a final document, which we will need to approve tonight. The plan moving forward is to bring that, bring this strategic plan back to the group that participated in, in the development of the plan and also invite anybody else that might be interested. The important thing that we need to do now is to prioritize the many items that are listed in this document, which is, it's, it's three pages and it's a lot of words and a lot of work to be done.
And this is available on the website as well, am I right? Or will be?
Yes. In fact, there are 21 separate items that the strategic plan came up with and each of these have a time on there. In other words, some of these are scheduled to be done sometime before January of 2018 and some are scheduled to be done by June of 2019. But it, this is a plan that is going to take a couple of years to implement. And the, the three-page plan that highlights the 21 categories is simply an outline. There's a lot of meat and potatoes that have to be put behind each and every one of these. The cabinet is meeting next week, all four of the principals are back at work and so we're going to start going through each of these and then we will ask the entire group that participated and anybody else that wants to participate because the idea behind the strategic plan, unlike many plans where they were done for, they were done and then they sit on the shelf and they're pretty stagnant, this plan, the last page of this plan, it actually shows what the implementation plan is going to be and there's October, November, December, January, February, March timelines. And then this is scheduled then to also be reviewed on an annual basis publicly. And so it's kind of our school district report card. It's, so we can be able to evaluate this on an annual basis and see how we're doing.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I just appreciate the clarity that was brought forward with this as far as specifically stating what our goal is and specifically stating when it is hoped to be accomplished. And I, and I think that's a great plan for any business in any school and indeed any household, so I appreciate the work that everybody did in helping to put this together.
And it was a great response from parents, the community, teachers, just there was such a great mix of people. It was well, it was well-presented and then clearly the work, there's a lot of work here and good work, so, well done by the community.
And I would like to, you know, encourage all of the community, you know, anybody that didn't have an opportunity to participate to, to come forward and share their thoughts and don't feel that, you know, because you weren't part of the initial conversation that your thoughts aren't valued. We need to have a continuing dialogue with, you know, with parents and kids and faculty and, and community members to create a school district which is, you know, which will provide a great educational platform for the kids. So, and we'll announce a date for that meeting and make sure that everybody's aware of it. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the strategic, or the Fairmont Area School Strategic Plan 2017, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And moving to personnel, Julie, resignation?
We have a couple resignations here late in the year here. Haley Rochetall?
Rochetall.
Rochetall? Oh, my.
I know.
Fourth grade teacher, she's tendered a resignation to accept another teaching position closer to home. She was employed with our district. She was employed with our district for two years. So I'd make a motion to approve the resignation of Haley, a sixth, no, it says fourth grade or sixth grade.
It is, you know, it is sixth grade.
Sixth grade, yep. Effective June 19th, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, and then our second one, Amy Ebbelsizer has resigned her position as an early childhood teacher. She had just finished up her first year teaching with Fairmont Schools. And so with that, I would approve the resignation of Amy Ebbelsizer, early childhood teacher, effective June 26th, 2017.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Dell, we have an employment issue.
Michelle Rosen is recommending that Tiffany Harris be hired as an early childhood teacher to replace Amy. Tiffany holds a BS degree in early childhood education from Minnesota State University Mankato. Tiffany's been employed for the past five years with the Jackson School District, having served two years as a preschool ECFE teacher and three years as the second grade teacher. So I would make a motion to approve the employment of Tiffany Harris as an ECFE slash preschool teacher effective June 30th, 2017, at a salary of a BA Step 6 under the, under an 88.28 contract.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a medical leave request, Julie?
Yes. Rusty Burnham Custodian has requested a medical leave. Absence began on June 12th, and he's expected to return to work on, on or about August 8th, as per his doctor's recommendation. So I'd make a motion to approve a medical leave request from Rusty Burnham effective 6/12/2017 to August 8th, 2017, or per medical recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So board committee reports, is it just staff welfare?
I think it's just me. We said that yesterday, we met, we said, my gosh, we haven't seen each other for so long. It just seems like it's been forever. So Staff Welfare Committee, we met yesterday about 4:30, discussed the resignations of Haley and Amy. Also, the employment of Tiffany Harris as the ECFE preschool teacher. Employed, we didn't, we aren't, we didn't hire Betsy, did we yet? Or it's in?
That is correct.
Yeah, we had some, we're, we're waiting or seeing what, something can work out. We have a, kind of a teacher on the line here, otherwise we'll be looking for another teacher. We discussed business manager's contract with the recommendation, and I believe we were going to go through that. And principal's contract was also discussed, and we looked at a four-year contract at that time for, nothing is done and final yet, so I'm not releasing any information, so.
Right.
It's secret, yeah? No, not secret.
It's in process.
There you go. Okay, good. That's all.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Entertained a motion for adjournment?
We are going to be going to discuss superintendent's contract after this, or your review, valuation. Yeah, we'll leave the contract for another day.
So move to adjourn.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I still want to say no. We sure are blessed, Sue, to have you.